Good evening. The Raritan Township Planning Board is now in session. Call to order, the notice requirements of the public, Open Public Meetings Act, have been satisfied by the placing of a notice of this meeting on the bulletin board at the municipal building, filing the notice with the township clerk, and transmitting the notice to the Hunterdon County Democrat, the Courier News, the Star Ledger, and the Trenton Times. I have a roll call, please.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Here.
Ms. Robyn Fatu.
Here.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Cavacchieri.
Here.
Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Here.
Mr. James Miller.
Here.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Here.
Board Professionals, Board Attorney, Mr. Joe Torriello.
Here.
Township Planner, Mr. Jeffrey Faccarella.
Here.
Township Engineer, Mr. Rakesh Darji via Zoom. Sorry. Board Planner, Ms. Jessica Caldwell.
Here.
And all other Board Professionals, fast to be excused.
Very good. Thank you. I'm going to ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for men and women in the armed services.
The Pledge of Allegiance is required by the United States of America. To the public, for what it stands, one nation, God, physical, we just for all.
Thank you. Of course, Brian Wilson passed away today. We didn't have a moment of silence for Brian Wilson. But I'm old enough that I remember Brian Wilson. Most people on this board may not know who I'm talking about.
I know who Brian Wilson is, mostly because my mother loved him.
Thanks. Wouldn't it be nice? Thank you. Okay. Comments and reports. I don't have anything this evening for chairman. Jeff's going to keep us busy here in a minute. Board comments. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss this evening? No. Engineers' comments for Kesh.
I don't have anything specific this evening, Jim.
Thank you. Planner's comments. Jeff, I know you have a couple of things for us this evening.
So, just based on previous conversations on some of the meetings about master plan elements, specifically stormwater and circulation plan, I've prepared a memo, just high level, just briefly, providing some background of of the first stormwater plan that it was, that it was required back in 2005, based on stormwater regulations. A lot has changed. So, and I've also provided some, some factors that were included in the 2005 plan, such as a build-out analysis, mitigation strategies for variances and waivers if applications seek those, so ways in which are implemented. GIS layouts, which, when I look, they're close to 30 years old, so updating those would be important. And then a lot of environmental data back from, from that time. So, we got.
Yeah.
Rakesh.
Yeah. What's your experience in towns that have started doing these updates that are required now?
So, yeah, we, we have updated a few towns, storm or master plans. Specifically, I think the closest one will be Montgomery. The, you're supposed to do an update every 10 years or so. Ours in Raritan was done in 2005, so we're, we've doubled that, I guess. Some towns, and there's nothing wrong with that. Most towns, you know, have sort of went to that 15 to 20 year frame anyway. So Montgomery's was done in 2007, and probably sometime in 2020, I believe, or 2021, the DEP started asking about, hey, you know, updating their stormwater plan. So we've, we've worked on Montgomery's recently on that. So, I mean, it, it's just like any other, you know, master plan element. It's not one of the required elements, but, but it is just like any other. It'll, it's a document that we periodically review and update to help guide our, our, you know, future legislation and, and how we do development and, and the like in, in the township. I did review the stormwater plan. After Jeff and I talked, I did review our stormwater plan. It was a pretty, pretty well researched and thoroughly prepared document. It does need to be updated. We can certainly work on that. We'll work with Jeff and, and Township Committee to, to get that, get that done. I'm happy to answer any specific questions the board may have. You know, like I said, we do have experience doing them. Our, we're, we're doing a lot of stormwater work currently for the township. We're, we're going to be doing the GIS mapping and the dashboard for, for all the infrastructure in town, because new regulations actually require the township to actually locate every single one of their stormwater inlets and the pipe network that actually connects them to, and give the idea of which way all the stormwater is flowing, and then also prepare a watershed management plan that actually maps out, you know, what's actually flowing to each one of the outfalls and everything. So it's, it's a pretty involved process and a multi, multi-stage, multi-year process that we're going to begin this summer with the first stage, working with, with John Tully and his group.
Just, just one quick question with the mitigation strategies.
Yes.
Are there? And, and it may be a dim recollection, but there might be opportunities there for us to be more robust in some of the mitigation, to get some projects, stormwater issues remediated, or at least get some funding to do it. Is that, is that something that, that can be included, you know, or will be included in the plan?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and I, I don't know you to have dim, dim recollections, Donna. So your, your recollection is, is spot on. That, you know, there is a portion of the stormwater master plan that, that puts forth mitigation projects, right? And so that way we, and we'll work with, certainly with the staff and with any committees that have, you know, knowledge of, of what may be possible mitigation projects, and we'll include those as part of the master plan. When, you know, we'll note the mitigation projects. And then, once we have those in the forefront, we can look for possible opportunities for grants to, to make those mitigation projects happen. And then also, one of the other things that, that can happen is if you have a developer that comes along who, for whatever reason, can't meet the requirements of our stormwater ordinance, one of the requirements that we have is that we make that developer, we compel that developer to actually implement one mitigation project. So you, you know, you're not really supposed to give a free pass on stormwater waivers or variances. That's one of the reasons why we're so adamant about the stormwater compliance, because for, for an actual variance or deviation from the stormwater requirements, you're actually required to implement a mitigation project as part of that. So that, that's another reason why you list the mitigation projects in the master plan.
Yeah. Get them to pay to pick fixed up problems we have.
Yes, absolutely. And it's just right. You know, it's, it's, they're, they're also doing, they're implementing a project that, that they're benefiting from, and they're not meeting the requirements of, of the stormwater per se. So that it's right that they actually do a mitigation, or at least a portion of mitigation. If we have some sort of funding source, and let's say the project is beyond what, what maybe they should be doing, it could be, you know, something where they fund a portion of it, or something like that, along those lines.
And of course, we have the new large warehouse under construction.
Yes.
And in this, in our meetings, we had detailed discussions with the developer on, I remember, that pipe that goes underneath 202 and dumps into a trench on the other side.
Right.
Yeah.
They, they really need to be diligent.
Yep.
Take a look at that.
Yeah, and we're going to be paying close attention to that as, as, as part of the inspection. So the mitigation is really intended for, like, if you can't meet the requirements for either quality, quantity, green infrastructure, what have you, and therefore we'll have a canned mitigation project, which that developer can maybe implement. It does have to be in the same HUC 14 drainage shed and everything, so it gets a little bit more involved, but you, you gotta have a starting point. So that's, that's what the mitigation project list will be.
Great. Thank you, Rakesh. Jeff, did you want to say anything about circulation plan?
Yeah, I was just gonna talk about the circulation plan. On the same note, it has been some time since the last, since the last update around 2005, 2006. So a lot has changed since then. So I briefly listed some of, some talking points, some study, study points for, for the plan of identifying some, assessing some of the spot improvements that were on that plan, and possibly going forth of, of cataloging sidewalks and bike lanes, so that everything's incorporated. There's some other entities that are doing so. Another county's working on a bike plan, so integrating that with, with the township, it's something that could have a comprehensive document of roadways, pedestrian, and, and, and bike uses.
I had an opportunity to be in some cities in Europe in the last couple of weeks. They, they, they take bike lanes to a whole other level. And bike lanes, the bikers have.
Yeah.
You, as a pedestrian, you can't step in front of a biker. They have the right of way. I'm not suggesting that here, but I was amazed by inner-city bike lanes that were heavily used by people, and they were everywhere.
I have a couple of my impressions about the dissection. So, trying to mention speed and traffic, but if we're kind of moving into traffic divisions that are for, like, how do they get involved in making recommendations, or do they make changes based on recommendations of the town? How does that work?
Yeah, they, they can be part of it, part of what they, part of what they recommended. They, as part of the study.
Chief or someone.
Yeah. The chief. The fire department.
Would the recommendations from this element plan address what we hear so often around truck traffic? Where they go, where they go where they're not supposed to go? Like, does this address that? So it optimizes where they're able to go, because they put a heavy toll on roads they're not supposed to be, or where they, they use as an alternate bypass to avoid a 31, and then we're having to replace roads a lot more often. You can't truck that and handle that load that often. Right? So just address that.
Potentially. I mean, it could, it could introduce for a, an area that needs to be studied.
Jeff, can you move the microphone closer to you? And Robyn, I'm sorry, just make sure when you speak, just hold the button.
Somebody's on.
Yeah, you're on, Jeff. Yeah, it could potentially be identified as far as a specific traffic study for that area, or if there is an area, I think that would have to be done subsequent to that, but an area that, that's identified, like the, the river road portion, was identified as being, there was some discussions of it being having a weight restricted area, but the actual implementation came.
So it will identify places to explore and be further studied. It will not say, here's where the truck should be going.
But in the overall road hierarchy that you establish by the width of your roads and the speeds on your roads, you can preferentially nudge people, nudge traffic. So there, there's ways within that hierarchy, and that, you know, the township and some of the smaller township roads, like, you know, when you think, I, I look, when you go through some ridge, and there's those bump outs that come out with, like, you put some of them along Pennsylvania Avenue, you think the tractor trailers are going to want to go down that road anymore? You know, so I'm just saying, there's traffic coming, there's design elements, there's, you know.
That little roundabout on miniacking.
Yeah.
Because you go past Paul Phillips.
Yeah, so.
This was the previous version of the tax year.
Yeah.
So like, there is less of all the things that we actually do. I would like to know that.
Very little.
And, and then other questions. Why not? Funding is one, but why not beyond funding, getting to do it? So that would be helpful as we get into it, to know what's already been done and accomplished.
Okay. And, and speaking of getting into it, you recommended that a subcommittee be put together?
Yes.
And now is the time to get this ball rolling? That was a question. It didn't sound.
Yeah, if, if the board's comfortable making that, just having that discussion now, then yes.
Okay. How many people you want on the subcommittee?
I think it's.
You have.
Less than three, right? Three is the max.
Three's max.
Right.
I would like to be part of that. Anybody else? I'm sorry.
No, no, I was going to say, but then other people, non-board members, like chief of police or whoever else we decide needs to be involved as kind of advisors, informers could be involved as well.
So three of us, but you can have chief of police.
Yes.
Other, okay, okay, I got you.
So this is the rule? I would like to represent the township committee.
Yeah.
I'd like to be involved, but someone else is really passionate for.
I'm, I'm looking at Dennis, because.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to do it.
Can you?
He's a dual board though.
Yeah, he's a member.
You know, maybe it could be, you know, because I'd like to be, so maybe it's the kind of thing that we can have a working committee, and then we could do working sessions at the board to, to discuss things for other, to bring in some more input.
Okay.
Do you have stormwater people or are these separate subcommittees?
That's a good question. I think it, it would, there are two different elements, but it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It probably better be separate, because they're totally different bandwidth. Oh, I guess I'll do stormwater now.
I was like, that spot was already filled. I knew one spot would already be filled.
Anybody else want to worry about flooding and storms?
I do, but when do these meet usually? Do they tend to be like daytime?
We can decide when.
Yeah, it could be, it could be at night if there's.
Well, I don't want people to be at night if.
I can do stormwater.
So I won't.
I can do either one.
We'll find a time that works with it if you're interested. I like, I like having, you know, to be honest, I think the Michelle is the liaison with the Environmental Commission, because they've been doing a lot of commenting, and they have a couple engineers on that committee.
They've gone way past me.
Yeah, and their stormwater knowledge, so would be great.
And who chairs the stormwater subcommittee?
Well, however you choose, if we're going to let staff lead, and otherwise I'll do it. Okay. Okay.
I honestly, I think you know a lot more about Wilson's stuff.
I, I don't know the new stuff.
No, but you have experience.
That's for sure. We got Robin, Ed, and Dennis. Well, I'm going to back out, because I'm going to go with stormwater and let James go on circulation.
Or you already have three on circulation?
No. You?
David.
Dennis, right?
Yep.
Dennis, James, and.
Robin.
And Robin.
Okay.
I thought I had the three.
Yeah, I was going to suggest to you.
And that's funded, right?
Yes, yeah, both of them, yep.
You did something right today.
With Jeff, Dennis.
Jeff, you also wanted to, if you're done with circulation and stormwater, you wanted to address something with board application status?
Yeah.
Maybe the document was just informational.
The document's informational. I haven't done one in a while. There's, there's a lot. This encompasses all of the site plan and subdivision applications that have been heard, that have some sort of update. Some are in resolution compliance that haven't been finished, but, and a lot of the, and some of them haven't been deemed complete, so it's an all-encompassing list.
You guys have a lot on your plate. Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
There's a lot there.
You're welcome.
I should address this as well for this evening, and then we'll forget you, Joe. We'll go to you in a second. The closed session for attorney-client privilege that's on the agenda will be canceled this evening, because there was no moving forward on that. And the resolutions, both attorneys came in with adjustments to the to the resolutions late this afternoon. So, we need time to, certainly our attorney needs to.
4:30, 1:00, 5:30.
Yeah.
A little, little late in advance.
Yes, so they're both off the agenda.
They were notified. Taylor notified me to re-list it for the next meeting.
Okay. And with that, Mr. Torriello, any comments? Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, we're going to the.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's next up. There it is. So, and we, I mean, we even have Jessica here with us today, coming from the great northern county of New Jersey. So thank you for the report that you issued to all of us. I'm grateful that Taylor printed it for me. I can't print it at home. And so I'm going to kick it over to Jessica for an overview, and we have some action that we need to take this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would it be okay if I sign off? Not that, I'm not interested in, in listening to Jessica and Jeff. I don't think, I don't think the mayor wants to pay me to sit here and listen to it.
Yeah.
No problem, Rakesh. We know where to find you.
Thank you.
I, I'm here if you need me.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, buddy.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, so we have a housing element and fair share plan before you this evening for a public hearing, stated June 11, 2025. As far as the housing element goes, it does contain all of the elements required by the Fair Housing Act and municipal land use law. It includes a relationship, a community overview, a review of a relationship to the municipal master plan, as well as the state development and redevelopment plan, and the Hunterdon County growth management plan, as well as surrounding municipality's master plans, a history of affordable housing, various demographics related to population, age, household, employment, and housing characteristics, and a review of the zoning within the municipality, particularly residential, and where residential housing could be constructed. What I'm going to focus on is the fair share plan, and then talk about a few comments that I've gotten so far from the chair and vice chair, and then, you know, take any questions or comments from the board, and I guess potentially the public as well. So the fair share plan starts on page 33, I believe. Let's see. Get to it here. Yes, starts on page 33. So this is essentially our plan for compliance with affordable housing obligations in the Fair Housing Act. It goes through, we always go back to the beginning and talk about all of the various rounds. So I'll give brief summaries of those as well. Prior round obligation is 1987 to 1999, also extended through 2005, was met through a variety of mechanisms for 360 credits, including some credits without control, supportive, and special housing credits, some RCA credits, as well as 100% affordable age-restricted housing, 100% affordable family housing, and a variety of inclusionary projects as well. For the third round, which ran from 1999 to 2025, Raritan Township had an obligation of 857 units. Running for such a long period of time, there were sort of two categories of credits that we worked through, through the court certification process in the end, that there were credits that were accumulated up to 2015, and then some that were planned for after 2015. So primarily, some inclusionary zones, supportive and special needs housing, assisted living credits, there's RCA credits from the prior round that got applied, and as well as some inclusionary development projects. Some of the proposals that came in after 2015 included the 66 Junction Road, which is 100% affordable. Villages at Raritan Junction, enclave at Raritan Junction, Raritan Junction, Raritan Town Square, Stonegate, South Main Village, extension of expiring controls. And then a group home program that was proposed, and we didn't quite complete all of the units there, and so I'll get into that a little bit later. On Habitat for Humanity Homes, Countryside Townhouses was a board of adjustment approval that was recently granted. And then Transitions Assisted Living Facilities, assisted living facility that was constructed during the round three period. So essentially, out of the 857 credits, we got to 843, having a little bit of a shortfall on the group home projects. So for round four, through the process of providing our own sort of obligation based on review of land capacity factor, and then some work with Fair Share Housing Center and a settlement agreement, we have a fourth round obligation of 285 units. And then we have that unaddressed perspective need from the third round of 14 units. And then we have a rehabilitation or present need obligation of 44 units. So I'll go through the mechanisms that we're proposing to address that obligation. So first and foremost, we're extending expiring controls at Oak Ridge at Flemington Apartments, which is a prior round, family rental development with 16 affordable rental apartments that were built in 1995. So they are set to expire this year. And so the Township Committee, if they haven't already, is in the process of extending those credits. We can get up to four bonus credits for those at the time, so I have that in for 20 credits. After that, we have a durational adjustment. As you remember from the third round, we were really, we're coming up to the wire as far as available capacity at the RT, RTMUA facility. So that is an ongoing issue. There isn't currently available capacity for the types of projects that would be inclusionary projects. Some projects and existing developments exist out there that have some allocations, but there's nothing available that we know of, and we, we have, you know, confirmation from the RT, RTMUA. So when that occurs, we do what's called a durational adjustment, and that means that essentially, even though we're providing for some overlay zoning, we don't necessarily expect that zoning to occur during the round four time period, which is 2025 to 2035. And that's because there's not existing capacity. So what we do when we propose zoning for inclusionary zone, we have to say, you know, it's readily developable, you know, it's available, it has utilities, it's, you know, there's nothing in the deed or title that's holding up the property. Well, here, we can't really say that, because we know there's not utilities available. So what we do is, is called a durational adjustment, and we durationally adjust those, those units. What we're also doing as part of that is proposing what, what's called overlay zones, and those zones would be triggered if capacity becomes available. And the reason we do that is because when you do a durational adjustment, you're required by the Fair Housing Act to agree to allow someone, if they come up with utilities on their own, to come into the plan unless you zone for locations where, where they could go. So what we would prefer to do is say, we've looked at the municipality and decided where we think that if capacity becomes available, these are the locations we think that housing should go, rather than having, just leaving it open and someone coming to us and saying, this is where we want to put it. So we've proposed overlay zones that are durationally adjusted for that entire obligation of the 279 units, and I'll go through what those are. We also have the rehabilitation or present need obligation, which is 44 units. We have an existing program that's administered and funded through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so we just continue that program. So for the durationally adjusted zones, we proposed five different locations. And they're all within the plan with, with mapping. We don't have the actual zoning prepared currently, but we, you know, we'll go through that at, at a later date as part of compliance with the submission. But the 18 mini-ocanine, mini-ocanine overlay is on block 16.01, lot 16.05. That's a 4.81 acre site. It's in the I-2 major industrial zone district. It's in the RTMUA sewer service area. I believe all of the zones that we proposed are within the sewer service area, so should there become available capacity there, at least already in the sewer service area. And what we proposed for this one was a density of 20 units to the acre with a 20% set aside. All of our zones have a 20% set aside based on. based on the precedent that we've had in the last round and the lack of sewer, you know, wanting to make sure that we get a good set aside if we do get any development. So we have 19 units proposed for that 18 Miniakine overlay. And just as an aside as well, what we did as part of a subcommittee, Affordable Housing Subcommittee, to identify these zones is really looking for places where we have access to major highways, or we have properties that are underutilized, could utilize some improvement, those types of things. So we really look for places where the housing made sense, the higher density housing made sense, where access to transportation or and/or, you know, commercial development is readily available nearby for people to access, even potentially walking. So the next zone is Hart Commerce overlay. It's block 71, lot 21, which is 22 Hart Boulevard and block 71.02, lot 21 Commerce Street. So these, these properties are 5.54 acre site and a 13.66 acre site, both in the B2 commercial district, also in the sewer service area. And we're proposing a density of 15 units to the acre here with a 20% set aside. Anything that wasn't sort of directly adjacent to 202, typically, we did a little bit of a lower density proposal. And that results in 58 affordable units for those two properties. The 206 Rayeville Road overlay, that one is a 12.19 acre site. It's in the R5 Planned Residential Development District. So it is surrounded by some of the existing inclusionary development in the community. And there is a proposal there for 15 dwellings per acre with a 20% set aside for 37 units there.
Jessica, one question. So as an example, I know we talked about property several times, the Hart Commerce overlay.
Yes.
We talked about how there was that tributary that crossed over the heart, goes all the way up from this printing, like, I'm not the expert, so that's why I'm asking. Like, how do you arrive at 288 units when there's so much obstructive thing to navigate around?
The stream on the south, I mean.
Well, and the stream actually goes up the whole way. So I'm just trying to understand, how did you come up with 288 if this was one of the lower heights because of where it is?
Right.
But also the waterway to navigate in the north parcel.
Well, we didn't actually do, you know, layouts, but it is a slightly lower density of 15 units to the acre. And these are, so it's really just a gross calculation, but I think you could concentrate, you know, development in probably three-story buildings to come to that, you know, type of density, but, you know, we could explore it further.
So I don't know how this works. Whoever knows the answer. But as an example, so this is an overlay developer company that says, great, I want to do the Hart Commerce project. And AJ, you said I could fit 288 units. Are we saying that they can fit 288 units? Or like, how does that work, right? Because what if they start looking at it, they buy it, and then they go, we can't fit 288 units in here. You said we could. Like, how does that, how does this hold any teeth to when we get to that?
So it's really a maximum density. So if they, if they couldn't get that, they would need to propose less, you know, and propose what could be fit onto the property.
Yeah, but they would want the maximum density, so they would force our hand to let them build what they want.
Yeah, like when we say what the max is in here, does that dictate what they're allowed to put on the table and say, but you said we could? I want to know, maybe that's a legal question.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure on that, but I'm leaning towards it could be problematic because we're hoping to, and we're making a representation to the state that this is our plan and this is, this is our number. So I would be more comfortable if the number, if we have some sort of assurance that the property can support those numbers.
I live over there. I would lose my mind if someone came to this application with that many units.
Well, I get, I mean, I actually have had that experience where, you know, we had a pretty high density on a piece of property that, and the developer, because they're doing a package treatment plant on the property, it can't support the number of units. And essentially, what happened with the municipality is that they, you have to find other locations for that zoning just to make up for the units. If, you know, you need to answer all of the units, like, let's say, all, if something happens at the sewer facility and all of a sudden you have all the capacity you need for all of the units, you know, then you might need to find another location to, you know, provide for that development. But I think there's, it's not uncommon that the zoning can potentially provide for more development than what can be built on a piece of property. But I, you know, because one thing is, I don't think we really are at a place where we could change this tonight, but we certainly could try to address it, you know. I'm pretty sure we're probably gonna have amendments as we go through the process with the program and everything else, and we could, you know, potentially address it if we think that this couldn't be built.
I would definitely concur that we are up against it in terms of timing. This has to get done tonight. I think, and again, I'm not speaking from a place of experience and I've done this before or done like research. I think there is, to me, there's a difference between getting in, starting to develop, and let's say there's some, there's some geographical issues or some other problem that is not identified, but it's identified in the process. And it's like, all of a sudden, it can't support what we thought, and then you're pivoting because the unidentified realities shift the ability versus, like, identified issues that can't support the number, you know, from the get-go. I don't know, first of all, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a planner, obviously, and I don't know the property at all. So if it's something that, that could, even if it's a plan that isn't easy, but, but it could be done, and this is part of, is this part of the durational, this is, this is part of the...
Yeah, I mean, it's a durationally adjusted zone.
Theoretical, it's like one, it's not part of our plan. It's only part of our plan to the extent that the sewer becomes available.
Can you consult your colleagues on how much weight does the, how we own a fair share plan pull for a developer to say that you have it here instead of there? Like, that's my question.
Yeah.
You know, I just don't, I'm afraid that...
I'm honestly afraid, looking at all of them, that the densities are too high for what we want in this town.
Well, I feel like we talked about that, because we did make adjustments somewhere 21st for acre, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
But just in perspective, I guess I find it helpful. Like, what are the 200% affordable housing? What are their densities on...
What are the what?
The two...
Willow's.
Willow's one and Willow's two. And do you have any guess what their density was? Because I wouldn't...
The Willow's ones?
Yeah, that were 100% affordable, just out of, from perspective. I think that would help, like, your head wrap around it, because some of those are two and three stories.
It was a little tricky, like, with some of the inclusionary zones, because they were developed on existing, like, commercial properties, so the actual property was much larger. But if you look at where they were developed, I would say they were all in the range of 20 units to the acre.
Yeah, that's, I would guess, especially the one on the right.
Yeah.
That wasn't set back as much, the newer one. Yeah, three stories. So that's where, that's what we're talking about, so.
But I know if you start building more three-story buildings in this town, you're gonna have people really...
Yeah, but we gotta do affordable housing.
Yeah, I mean, what the trade-off is, I mean...
This is trying to comply with where it's needed along the RTMUA lines. When we did the analysis, they were very limited properties. So this is how we started with, like, the whole map. They can still build affordable housing where they're off the RTMUA system, right?
Right.
So there's nothing stopping for developers doing affordable housing projects elsewhere in the community. But we are so finite and limited parcels that are along the RTMUA that that came itself with the factor.
Yeah.
And then this is just suggestive, right? The overlays are suggesting where they could go. And I'm hoping that this plan is suggestive of how many units they could potentially do. And then once they get into it, as Council said, if they find, oh, there's a tributary, we're gonna have to change the look and feel of the project. It may not be as high, or maybe fewer units, et cetera. But, you know, I think we're talking two different things, but I just wanted to give you context to, like, how we got where we are tonight.
Yeah, and if, if they can't, like Jessica said, if they can't build that number here, we're still on the hook for the numbers, and we'll have to identify another parcel.
Yeah. So is that where you said there would be further requirements to this over time?
Yeah, well, part of what we have to do through compliance is do layouts. So I think we would come to that conclusion before we do the zoning. So if there is a concern that we're, you know, so where we're at is we're, we have, like, draft... I don't want to say it's a draft, but we have draft proposals, and we have to go further down the road with these to make sure they work.
That was when you asked, you were asking, how to 288?
Right, that's, I didn't know that step.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah. So through compliance, I think we'll be addressing those issues.
If, if you read what's here on page 39, right, under Rayville, the last sentence, "This provides for the realistic development potential," you know, yielding up to 183. So it's kind of...
Suggestive.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, because we realize on a lot of these properties, there's constraints.
Because you have this here, I can go and build a five-story building and fit it all in.
And that is so opposed to what we all want.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And Jessica, I'd like to add the other ones.
So what is the step called? This other step that we got from?
Well, part of the directive, so the administrative offices of courts put forth a directive of all the things that we're supposed to include in these housing plans. Of course, we don't have much time to get that far, but so we're gonna do it through compliance, and that's where we have to do layouts that show that the zoning can be developed, as we're saying, it can be developed. Because I think, similar to what I referenced with the other municipality where I had this issue, it's not uncommon to look at a piece of property and say, all right, for affordable housing purposes, here's the density, here's the zone. And you don't necessarily take the step of figuring out, is it gonna fit on the property? You know, and especially with these durationally adjusted zones, because you're kind of just trying to find a location for them. So I, I think the courts basically said, we realize that sometimes this occurs, so we're gonna make you do that extra step where you have to look at a layout and show us that it can really realistically be built.
And so taking that next step, let's...
No, no.
So let's say we do that compliance exercise with Hart Commerce, and the assessment comes back and it said, well, we thought 288, but now that we did this thing, the layout, it suggests more like 210. What do we do? Update this plan? I think that how, what happens?
Yeah, so we would need to update the plan. We would either increase density on another site or look for another site. And that's really the trade-off with the densities that you get is that if you go with lower densities, you have more sites. So it's sort of a, that's, you know, that's the trade-off. That's why we look for areas where the higher densities wouldn't be as impactful, that you can limit the number of locations, you know, rather than having 10 locations at, you know, 10 units to the acre or something like that.
One or two mega towers right along the 202 corridor. On your side of town, right?
Sure, no problem.
We'll go over shop rate, because that's still up there.
Yeah. Sorry, I think we were on 206 right now.
Yeah, 206 Rayeville. That one, that one's 37 affordable units proposed with the 15 dwellings per acre. The...
Sorry, one more question. And these are all, like, currently, right now, like, private property. These aren't townshipal property, right?
Oh, yeah, correct. So it's up to a developer, either buy the property or the current owner.
Okay, so it's not like it's...
There's no eminent domain.
One that we're saying.
We could, we could buy it and do it, we could take it, but we don't own any land.
Yes, this is just proposed for zoning. We're not proposing to build it. We're not, we don't have developers who said they would build it, you know, it's just proposing.
I will mention on this specific property that the Township Committee received a letter from a resident in one of the surrounding leases, and they had, like, a whole list of questions. And so we handed that letter off to, on where to help... Not answer all the questions explicitly, but provide a sound at this point in time where we are.
I just got a new thing on the line, girl. I, I sent him a text saying, what I advised the board was, if the overlay says 288, and it turns out it can only hold 200, and Raritan Township is obligated to find 88 under a piece of property, so that's correct.
All right, yeah.
My only fear is being a developer, you will say, well, you have it in your plan, I'm building in.
Yeah, and I got confirmation that...
Good validation, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't know the answer, but the one thing about me is, I don't, if I don't know, I just say I don't know, and that gets you the answer.
That's okay. Okay. So we're not bound to this, but we are bound to somewhere. They have to be at some point in time, and we know that then, so I think that's the key point for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear you, Michelle, for sure. But yeah, we'll, we'll address this in a ditch right now. I think that's the first of many letters to name for you from the public about all of this.
Was that a public person that read about this?
Somebody...
It was directed specifically about the housing.
Yeah, they're like, I live on, I don't, I mean, I don't remember. But they're like, I live on Hope Court, you know, and I'm concerned, blah, blah, blah.
It was a senior.
Oh, it was Hart.
Yeah, Fleming Company, some property manager.
Oh, Fleming Company. Okay.
Okay, so 314 to 324 Highway 202, it's block 72.23, lots 31.01 and 32. It's a basically 19.35 acres in the B2 commercial district. Also in the sewer service area, we proposed 20 units to the acre with a 20% set aside for 78 affordable units.
Do these parcels have sewer associated with them?
What's that?
Do these parcels have reserved sewer?
None that I know of.
Okay.
Like, well, there is.
It's already on our list.
It's adjacent to where the dealership.
Okay, okay.
I'm like, wait a minute.
Oh, that, maybe it does. Oh, yeah.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah.
I don't know if they do.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking at this, I'm like... Yeah, that's, okay. And playing on it.
Because I remember they split this one off from...
The other side.
Right.
Yeah. Which, that's country, what's it called?
Family.
The dealership.
Yeah.
Okay. 454 Highway 202 Case Boulevard, block 40, lot 9. It's a 12.6 acre site in the O2 Office Business District. This one, we actually had a proposal from a developer. I don't know if they have sewer capacity. Their proposal was that 12 and a half units to the acre with a 20% set aside that would provide for 32 affordable units. And then...
So that's how, that's how the density, this is what they proposed?
That's what they proposed.
Okay.
Yeah. Highway 202, South Main Street. It's block 70, lot 3, 12, 13, and 14. These are four parcels totaling 14.21 acres. I'm proposing 20 units to the acre with a 20% set aside for 57 units. And that is all five of the units. So that's, or five of the zones in overlay zone. So those five zones is durationally adjusted zones, durationally... So it's those five zones is durationally adjusted zones, durationally adjusting the two hundred and seventy-nine units. Uh, the extension of expiring controls for twenty units. So that meets the total credit amount is a two ninety-nine is what we're proposing. And that is the entirety of the plan at this point. And we have several attachments, resolutions, ordinances that are already in place, a proposed spending plan, uh, marketing plan, and then deed restrictions relative to the extension of expiring controls. And this is due by June thirtieth to the program.
I saw there was a lot of sewer stuff in here.
What's that?
That sewer capacity stuff in.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, that RTMUA report that.
Does it confirm we don't have any?
To confirm that we don't have any, yes. That we didn't just make that up. So I also got um some comments from. Um.
Oh, yeah.
Chairman as well as vice chair. I just go through those briefly. Uh, the chairman noted that figure one, it's it's the state plan map and it shows uh one open space parcel over the Clover Hill County open space. He mentioned that maybe we should put a note that there is other open space in the township, but it's consumed in other um state planning areas, which is fine. Uh, there's a reference in parabop one point two to the two thousand reexam, which I agreed should be deleted since the master plan was updated in two thousand eight. Uh, and then there's some comments about center boundaries, um buffers and green belts. Uh, that's within the state planning areas. Uh, so he wondered if we should add a note uh with respect to some of the overlay zones, if that should be considered when we do the zoning, which I think makes sense. Uh, and then there's a a reference to Hillsborough in uh on page seven that doesn't note that it's not in Hundredan County, so we need to correct that, as well as a typo on page thirty, misspelling bowls. And then there's um some comments from vice chair, uh, Drew's about um page twelve, there's a a mistake in one of the age groups that we can correct. On page twenty-five to twenty-seven, we reference the zones, but then for some reason, an R six is the only one we referenced the echo units should be in and really should be in all. What I suggest is maybe rather than adding it to all of them, putting it under multi-generational housing, that it's permitted in all. So it's just one change instead of.
Yep.
A whole bunch of changes. Uh, and then page thirty-two, uh, she noted that the RJR district didn't have the set aside shown as a twenty percent set aside, so we can add that as well. So those are some changes that I would propose uh that go into the adopted plan that you adopt tonight. I'm happy to take any further questions, comments from the.
I don't have a typo. Where? On thirty-seven. Three four.
Which page? I'm sorry.
Just the transitions assisted living, has two eyes in it.
Yeah.
Second degree.
Down the bottom. Good catch.
Just an extra eye. Not really a big deal.
Start over.
Uh, extra eye?
Yeah.
Okay. Am I, I'm sorry. I'm just seeing that.
I'm like zooming in on it, like.
Anybody that wasn't on the such community in front of this journey to get here, like I realize it's just put in front of you. Be like, sure, why not? Um, but like, any concerns or questions?
I have I have a question, you know, like on six, seven, eight, when it talks about each one of the planning areas and and from the state development redevelopment plan, it says you must have public facilities and services phase and program for construction to part of the dedicated capital improvement budgets. How are we addressing that? Because it goes for each one of the plans and we don't have the sewer passing.
So sewer is available, it's just no capacity. Is that, I think that's distinguishing difference.
Okay, so so from saying, you know, you must have a capital improvement budget or part of a a public private development agreement for the extension or establishing of public services. So you're saying including wastewater services to support the development. You're saying we've got capital plans?
No, I'm saying that all of these sites connect to all the utilities necessary. Whether or not there's water is like separate. I don't think legally it's considered whether or not there's water capacity. Isn't it more relative to utilities that are available technically, right?
Yeah, the the rational adjustments because there is no availability.
Yeah.
Even if it's it's, you you could say we have to provide it, but it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist. Yeah, they're all located in the sewer service area.
That's what was a limiting factor in the process. We went for properties that have all the utilities available to now. Opening, but you're right, we don't have any capital set aside to try to build more sewer lines or anything like that. But we're not obligated to build more sewer lines. We just make sure these overlays have it there available. And technically, we need that criteria.
Yeah, and what what you're reading from that planning area, that state guidance?
Right.
That when they identified areas of the state and and how they should be developed, that's what they're saying. They use that criteria to decide if an area was in one, two, three, four, five, or whatever. So, yeah, so that's their kind of overall language. So not that we can ignore it, it's just kind of there.
When you were talking about the units required from third round that we also need now because we didn't do them before? You said there was something with the special needs housing or something. What happened with that, that we didn't build it before?
Well, uh, you know, honestly, it was one of those things just, I think, put forth to close the settlement agreement at the time. So, you know, we were trying to get to the number and Fair Share Housing Center basically said, put in a program for twenty-seven group homes just to close. But they didn't require us to actually have the program.
Okay.
So it just was really what naturally was.
Okay, got it.
Developed.
Okay, so it's not like.
I don't know what it is.
We didn't do anything wrong. It just didn't, it just, they didn't get built.
Kind of like we're proposing to max out the bonus categories. What ends up happening? We may not need the bonuses maxed out like we're trying to to meet the number, right?
Right.
We want. Developers, what they end up doing may not match that. Yeah, that may happen this year.
Do we have more special needs housing included in this round? Like the plan for that particular type of housing or it's just general right now?
We have it in the spending plan that if funding becomes available and there's projects available, that we would fund them. So I mean, there's always the opportunity potentially that you could seize on if if an, you know, a service provider came forward and said, do you have money in your housing trust fund to help us create, you know, group home? Then the governing body would say, yes, we we do if we do, and then you would help fund it and then you would get credits for that. And that's kind of the reason we go back and we calculate everything, because if you create some things during the fourth round that weren't necessarily in the plan, then you you still get credit for them.
And Mary just had a conversation with entity that came forward.
Oh, really?
We do all this. Are you open to it? At least have a conversation. And he said, sure. So we're gonna continue that conversation, but they would good help meet those maxed out things.
If we put however, if we put them in the plan, like we didn't have to do it as part of the third round. But if I put them in the plan and said, we're gonna have thirty units, I have to show that we have locations to put them, funding behind it.
So when is that specific? It's like.
Yeah, so I mean, we have it in the spending plan, so you can get opportunities, but we don't have it in the plan to require you to do it and have the bond for it or something like that.
Okay.
Jessica, I just want to put on the record that the that the housing element and fair share plan that you have uh prepared is designed to protect the public health and safety.
Correct.
And that it promotes the general welfare.
Yes.
And it's designed to achieve access to affordable housing and to meet Rowland Township's fourth round obligations.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, Jessica. We had received resolution, uh, the resolution adopting the housing element, fair share plan. It did not have a number on it. It now does. It's a.
Public, open to public.
Well, yes, let me open to the public.
We do have a number of public tonight.
Name and address. Thank you. There being nobody here, we can move on. So the resolution is eleven dash two oh two five, if you want to annotate that on your notes. And I'm looking for a motion to approve this resolution adopting the housing element and fair share plan.
Second.
Chairman, Mr. Evergattis.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu. Mr. Scott McDate.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis McCannon.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Cavakiri.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Sorry, Glenn.
Okay.
I know we're not discussing it tonight, the master plan reexamination report, but is it going to be on a same to be agenda? I have a lot of questions.
Well, if you would like, I mean, um, is if I'm in charge of the schedule, I mean, we do have June twenty-fifth on because we will have ordinances to review. If you would like for that, I will just have to put the notice in. It was my mistake. I did not correctly include it in the notice for tonight's meeting.
The only, the only thing that was noticed.
I would say we have some time. I don't think you have to rush it if you want to make it part of your subcommittees or something and and take a little more time with it. Uh, the idea, though, is to adopt something at the reexam before you do any more zoning so that you don't have to notice when you do all of the zoning.
I I guess what I have questions on was related to the twenty nineteen reexamination and what from those recommendations was not or not done. Which I believe falls on the governing body to legislate to those recommendations. Is that right?
It's my understanding.
If there are ordinance recommendations, yes.
I mean, it doesn't really say ordinance, it just says following or recommended.
I'm, I mean, there.
Louder.
There are some, especially like the lady zone, there are some things that have that were recommended and haven't been explored, but at that time just identified and then it never went through the discussion.
So then do those carry into this?
Yes.
So then if they were recommended before and no action was taken, it would sit.
Continue to be recommended. Yeah.
I mean, you can't update and revise if you decide it's no longer valid for some reason, but if it's something you want to do.
So is this getting reexamined before or after the master plan element changes?
Well, what you might want to do is recommend if it's not in there, the changes that you want to make to the master plan as far as circulation and stormwater as well.
And wrap it all together.
Things here at the same time.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, instead of making it sequential, just put it all together. It's good to go back to that, Robin, to your point. I mean, if things weren't acted on.
So I I already have all my notes. Who can I talk to?
You can ask me. You can give me your notes.
Right there.
Yeah, and it might be, you know, uh, it probably wouldn't hurt to send the last master plan reexamination report out to all of us to take a look at, just to see it, just to, you know, the PDF, yeah.
Really a brief one, just intended to cover the housing element.
Okay.
But you know, now that you're not adopting it tonight, I mean, you can.
Yeah.
Take a little bit of time and.
Yes, sorry, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, and and one of the things that we might want to think about is really doing a more robust land use master plan element.
Yeah.
Um, you know, with all the stuff going on with cir, you know, if we get circulation worked on and stormwater, you know, like it might be a really good idea to think about, to pull everything together. And then at that point, really digging into some of these things.
Right, like I I honed in on the prior recommendations in zoning and then I had to look up the block blocks.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
Come up on a map, I was like, wait a minute, and you know, knowing what they are today.
Yep.
What could have been done and didn't get done.
Yep.
I don't want that to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Being that an opportunity.
Yeah, like, you know, Bron was supposed to be a B two zone. Guess what happened? It wasn't. Stayed in I two. What do we all feel about that? So that's a consequence of not taking action on recommendations. And, you know, another one is expanding the outdoor recreation zone, which I was laughing at because I'm actually in discussions with people about that. So I'm like, oh, this was recommended back in twenty nineteen. And I'm talking about it now with various people to take what we know as like the diamond nation of outdoor recreation and expanding that out to like create more opportunity for our recreation of the town. And, you know, that that hasn't been done either. So it's just like little things that, like I was just kind of curious why were recommendations made and no actions taken? And I especially think this body doesn't take the action. I would pronounce it like the brighter body. But that's, I'm looking in the mirror, although I wouldn't hear at that time. I'm looking in the mirror and I want to hold my ears to taking the actions or considering the actions for the recommendation. Otherwise, this just gets filed.
Yeah.
Not what happened and we missed an opportunity here, a big one that we're all now living with. And that was really disappointing.
Well said.
Sorry.
All right.
Jeff, you on your, just can I go back for a second to the commercial board applications? Because you just mentioned, Robin, diamond nation, and you've got scheduled for July ninth on here. But I thought this couldn't move forward until the parking was dealt with. Has the parking been dealt with? Because I thought that was.
Yeah, Ed wasn't here at the last meeting when you made that announcement.
Okay.
Yeah. They've agreed to not start construction.
Okay, so it's a condition.
Yes, and not and not not just that they get the parking, that the parking is complete.
Operational.
Okay.
Very explicitly there.
Okay.
Or it's supposed to be able to park on it.
I like, I like that, counselor. I like that. There's no ambiguity with that.
Oh, no, 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 no. And I'm going to be pushing for many more than what they believe the ban limits.
Yeah.
Because we already know they're already parking on the streets in addition.
Yes.
So they're gonna have some more in favor of what they believe is the over.
I told.
In my opinion. Oh, I did too.
I made it clear.
To many of the interested parties over there, yeah.
Ken, I apologize because I wasn't here at the last meeting. Did they secure the property?
No.
No, not yet.
So in other words, if they want to proceed without securing the property, they can incur all of those soft costs, they can do whatever it is that they want to do, but they understand that the approval is just a piece of paper and it's literally worthless unless and until they secure the property and they and they make the parking lot operation. So and they understand that. I made that abundantly clear to Steve. He was, he was fine with it. They're confident that this is gonna happen. So, and I had suggested a number of like three hundred, I think.
Yes. I also quoted that number to the parties I spoke with.
Oh, look at that.
Just so they know.
Yeah, yeah, so they heard it from two separate sources.
At least around sound in the eyes and ears of council, owner developer and others.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that for me.
All right.
You do not have any minutes tonight. The resolutions have been postponed. Citizens' privilege. You do not have anybody here this evening who can speak. Public hearing. Okay, with that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.